Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Monday, the seventh day of February in the year 2022. This is an ad hoc committee meeting to investigate Suez Water of this Jersey City Municipal Council in efforts to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities. This ad hoc committee meeting of the municipal council will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. We had a scheduled 1:00 p.m. start and the clock on my computer is showing 1:10 p.m. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Prinzieri?
Yeah.
Councilperson Bajiano is not here. And we have councilperson Solomon. Um. Councilperson Rivera is not here and council president Waterman is not going to be present. Alrighty, so we have two council members present. At 1:10 p.m., in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall. In addition, the notice of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. I'm gonna now turn it over to councilperson Solomon.
Thank you all for being here. We received some of the documents through Director Kuna from Suez. We appreciate that. And we'll continue to review them. We sent out the agenda for today's meeting. And what we're really sort of looking to see for today's meeting is the sort of updates from the work that was jointly being done by Suez and MUA and OEM, where all of that stands, and that hopefully then allows us to address what the next steps of the committee will be. So we wanted to turn it over to, obviously, Director Kuna and Director Kirsten, Mr. O'Brien, and get your updates. And we had put together a list in the agenda of some of the things we're looking for updates on, but we're looking, obviously, very big picture for MUA updates on the capital needs and the replacement of lead pipes, which is somewhat outside the scope of the committee, but wanted to just be sure we understood that. Want to understand updates to the emergency communications and talking about multiple languages. We're looking at the water quality monitoring system in transit from the reservoir to Jersey City. Looking at the alert systems and how we increase distribution in enrollments. Looking at our water distribution plan to make sure that it is something we can execute on and then that it properly addresses sensitive populations. And then we want to talk about the use of wireless emergency alerts and when that would be called for. So those are just a couple of the things we were looking here. So I don't know, Director Kuna, if you want to take the lead on providing updates on those items. And we have the bullet points on the agenda. And then, you know, bringing in Directors Kirsten O'Brien when needed. Does that work?
Yes, sir. Sounds perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with number two on the agenda, first two bullet points. The very first one, the report on capital needs of water and sewer systems. So I'm sure you are all aware now that last week, it might have been a week and a half ago, the U.S. EPA granted us a 10-year extension on the, what they call the phase work, or basically the consent decree work that began as a result of a lawsuit that we settled with them on back in late 2010, which the clock for the original 10 years to address certain very important items began January 1st, 2011. The 10-year clock ended December 31st, 2022. And they, in their fashion, a little bit late, granted us an extension based on all of the new information we brought them. Bottom line is this, the original estimate back in 2010 that we agreed and knew upfront that needed to be done infrastructure-wise was approximately $55 million. We've since performed a lot more than that. We're probably upwards of $200 million since then, with a lot of it also in design in addition to that number. As you might imagine, it takes a long time. But one key element of the requirement back then was that we inventory the entire system and grade it on three or four different levels. I don't recall right now, but the worst being an imminent failure. So that took years. That took about four years to inventory so that we can structure our various phases. You've heard us discuss phases in the past. And they actually were included, I believe, in the bond resolution that you signed off on back in, I'm going to say, 2017, that covered about $372 million for sewer and approximately $200 million for drinking water investments to be spent by the MUA. The current estimate, including the sewer and water that we submitted to the EPA, is about $1.1 billion. But realistically, when I combine all of these different capital plans, which we are working on currently, because we're going to have to come before council again to revise this resolution and bring it up to date, we are closer to just over $2 billion between drinking water needs and sewer infrastructure and storm infrastructure needs. So no small numbers. What you see on the street right now is approximately $50, $50 to $75 million at work. And you see what it does to traffic now. So you can imagine the clock just started on the new 10 years, which gives us 10 years to do about $1.1 billion worth of work. Not going to be an easy task.
So just to make sure I understand, you said $1.1 billion and then you said $2 billion. Just can you start to clarify what those two numbers are for me?
Absolutely. So the $1.1 billion is what we are locked in in the eyes of the EPA to perform within the next 10 years. Started January 1st, 2022. So we have until December 31st, 2032 to complete that approximate $1.1 billion. I will give you the full list of the improvements and the prices, the costs, that were included in that consent decree extension. But the $2 billion, just over $2 billion, is the actual total needs citywide that I have tallied or my group has tallied to date. That's the realistic number. But again, more than half of that, or about half of that, $2 billion and change, is not being promulgated by the U.S. EPA. That is, the city electively choosing to upgrade what we know will be imminent failure. I hope that clarified it somewhat.
It does. And when you're sending us this documentation, is that, obviously, you have within the consent decree, which is the $1.1 billion, are you also including the additional areas of concern that add up to $2 billion? Is that gonna be included in what you send us?
Yeah, so councilman, in order to not confuse you, we're trying to just separate the two.
Sure, which is fine.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's why it takes a little bit of time. We haven't actually put forth that effort because we needed the consent decree to be approved and finalized and revisit our overall list before we made it public. But yeah, that's what we're working on now. We'll probably need about three or four weeks to get that done properly. So just bear on that. But those numbers are going to be easily backed up. One other little tidbit of information, just in the Ida damage alone and projects that were exacerbated by Ida, the storm Ida in September 1st of this year, of last year, 2021, we're at $85 billion and change just for that damage.
Sorry, billion with a B or a million with an M?
I'd say billion, million. You know, nowadays, billions and millions are almost interchangeable for me. No, that's $85 million, which is pretty significant for one storm event. But that just shows you how bad parts of the system were and being overcharged by the amount that they were with that amount of rain in such peak time, such short peak time, shows you how weak the system actually is in some areas. So but the good news, silver lining, is that that's about $85 million towards, most of it towards the consent decree, $1.1 billion, which is already underway. So if you wanted to find a silver lining, we're at, what, 8%, 7%? That should be completed within the next few months, underway already, thanks to Hurricane Ida.
Great, great.
So I can, yes, you're going to be getting that in detail. The second bullet is regarding the lead service program. So hopefully, by the end of Close the Business this Wednesday, we actually have a website up and running already. But by Close the Business this Wednesday, we will have ready a brochure for the entire lead-free JC program that we, the initiative that we're taking on, obviously, is promulgated by the NJDEP and the law that was signed in and enforced by the governor back in second half of last year. We have a deadline of middle of this month to send out letters directly to property owners and tenants of structures that we know and firmly have identified as having lead services. That amounts to about $2,200, if I'm not mistaken. We have more details online on the website, which I'll share shortly. Also, so we have about 10 years, no, we have exactly 10 years, from, I believe it's February 22nd, to replace every, to identify all services, the material, and replace all lead services. So in total, we have about 36,000 services citywide. We've identified just based on, you know, certain characteristics of the 16,000 total that we think may be lead. 2,200 firmly have been identified as lead. But that leaves us a balance of just over 14. I think we're gonna be over 14. It actually calculates to less than 14,000, but I think we're gonna be over 14,000 just in the experience that Newark had. They ended up having about 2,000 services more than the original number that they anticipated. So we're gonna be probably closer to 15,000 services. So in addition to all of the other improvements with sewer and the associated drinking water infrastructure that tends to fall apart as we do sewers, we're going to have this program going on simultaneously. So outreach is its own program in and of itself. The website is a wealth of information to start. And the website will also be consistently alive until we are complete with the program, including a connection, a link to GIS program, where anyone can click on their home or type in their address and zoom right in. It'll give you information if it's known on what type of service you have. That is going to be a living program. We are going to be updating it as we connect and identify out there on the street through whatever project we have, including any random visits or scheduled visits by Suez to read meters when needed, change out meters, things of that nature, to identify each service. We also are going to roll out the ability, if we haven't already, for homeowners and basically account owners to self-identify their service. It has pointers on the website. You have to follow it through. I didn't like the way it was available, so I'm working with the firm that's managing that site to make sure it's a little bit more readily available. Because the more, the more that the public identifies them for us, the more quickly we can, you know, schedule the work and move forward. But that's another very interesting element to this program that I hope becomes a very popular part of the program. But that's the extent of it right now, that the price tag as we see it for the amount of services that we think we need to replace stands at about $280 million. We're hoping it's less. But more importantly, we're hoping that the government comes through, the federal government comes through with 100% forgiveness on that money. But as of right now, it's a limited amount of money available from the state, which is not exact. And the trillion-dollar plan from the federal government does include some lead money. All of it is competitive at this time. But it will be rolling out in bits over the next five years. We anticipate or we hope that the federal government does the right thing and makes more additionally available to the point where every single community in the country has been granted enough money to completely get rid of lead in the systems. That's the goal. It remains to be seen if we get that, but the city has committed either way. We're probably going to finance upfront through the same loans that we've been seeking all along through the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank and hoping to make ourselves whole with any grant money that comes in after. But that's the most detail I can give at this time with respect to the lead replacement program.
Okay, that's great.
Number three, the third bullet, I'd like to make a recommendation, if at all possible. It seems we're gonna need a significant amount of coordination with the Department of Communications, well beyond what OEM can provide us. I was going to recommend a subcommittee just for the communications protocols, where we can talk a little more deeply about the language issue, you know, the multiple languages, the communication. Identify exactly how it works from a Suez/JCMUA standpoint to meet the regulations with the communications, just so that we don't cause ourselves to become, what's the word? I don't even want to say deficient, because we tried to put too much in there one time and the DDP wanted to fine us. It's not that we were deficient. We gave too much information in their mind. So I think what I want to recommend in the long term is that the city take on their own translation service, determine exactly what languages. We need to establish a protocol for the official so that it doesn't get muddied, and then a protocol for the hyperlocal. Does that make sense?
I mean, it does, but I mean, my just quick response is part of what we, we can't create, you know, 80% through a committee process, we can't create a new committee. You know, part of what we're trying to do is get it done, right? And then it is, it is, obviously, there are challenges and it's gonna require some extra resources. Part of what we're really asking you to do is to have those meetings and conversations and come up with the solution here. So, you know, I think, I think we, what I'm really looking for is to understand, you know, how, what the plan is specifically here with Suez and MUA and working with OEM on how you guys are gonna be able to address these communication challenges, additional languages, you know, populations that might lack access to different types of technology, how communicating with the city council in the future. And, you know, if at some point the recommendation is, you know, we can do this and we can do, we can do this level of communications now and we can do an extra level if the city has its own translation office, you know. Hypothetically, I think that's an option. But, you know, I do not want to open up a six-month process here or a three-month process here, you know. What I think, you know, just to be frank, I'm looking for is, we had situations where the communications didn't meet the standard that the people deserve, and they deserve our response to that. And so that's sort of what I'm, I'm getting the standard of looking for. And I think, you know, I don't want to speak for myself, but I think that's what the whole council is looking for as well.
Okay, that's fair enough. The reason why I went that route and threw it out there is because the four of the next, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 bullets are really gonna be targeted towards the communications department and their capabilities. And they're, you know, the last thing we want to do is drop the ball on the SOP. So we may need a little bit of involvement here from the BA's office as well as the major involvement by the Department of Communications. So allow me time to get that going. We were confidently addressing everything that we could directly control at this time, councilman, MUA and Suez. But we do have some updates on the next few bullets that I'd like to pass on to Suez to fill in the gap, what? And then maybe we could circle back to the communications part before we close this out, just so I can kind of formulate this a little bit more, given your answer, which is a fair one. If you'll allow me to pass that to Suez at this time, just to get through the other business.
Sure.
Before we circle. Okay. Jason, are you available?
I'm here, Joe.
Okay, great.
Hi, everybody. I think Joe wanted me to talk about the water quality monitoring stations. We did review that internally with our technical services team. And as I reported to you, you know, as one of the things you identified was we really only have one location from the water treatment plant down to what I would call the entry point for the city. While we monitor it at the water treatment plant and we monitor at the entry point, we got just one location. So when I reviewed that with our technical services team, what, you know, what I proposed to the MUA and to Joe is three additional monitoring stations specifically for chlorine residual and turbidity. And right now, our technical services team is kind of putting together how that monitoring station would look, if you could do a little design for it. And we're gonna put that in the capital plan that we have to provide the MUA in April. And then, you know, the MUA can approve these additional monitoring stations. We can choose the exact location of them. But the goal is to equally spread them out, you know, through the 23 miles of the aqueduct. I think that is a reasonable amount of additional monitoring stations to add to the aqueduct for some additional identification of potential issues.
Great. I appreciate that. You know, sort of a very concrete proposal. Do you have a sense, I know your team is looking at it now, do you have a rough sense of the cost per station?
Great question. I know our technical services team is working on it. Sometimes when you're gonna put these in, it depends on the location and what the cost is gonna be. You know, do we have an area that, you know, has power? Are we bringing in power? So they're kind of designing, you know, what this station would look like. You know, it can be, depending on location, it could be like a, maybe even a half a million dollars for each location that you need to put in for the aqueduct. Because these analyzers also have like a discharge as well. Like they're continually analyzing, they're continually moving waters. You have to think about where the discharge would go. That is something that we'll work with the MUA on, on the locations. And costing is gonna depend on what's available, you know, at locations that we choose.
Okay, great. So just so I'm clear, but basically, you're currently in the analysis process and you would expect to have the potential locations, the rough cost estimates provided to the MUA by April as part of your capital plan submission?
Correct.
And is that a five-year capital plan, 10-year?
It's a five-year capital plan that we submit to the MUA every April 1st.
Got it. So you basically update the five-year plan every?
Exactly.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Yeah, that would be very helpful, you know, as a concrete proposal for us to move forward. And then just so I'm clear, you submit it to MUA, MUA has final authorization on whether it moves forward or not?
Correct.
Gotcha. And then if the MUA does approve it, then you would start to plan for it?
And we would work with the MUA and on, you know, the design, the look, you know, we work with the MUA and everything to get it implemented.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, councilman, we'll probably, or most likely, have that in the master list before we come before council to approve the latest wish list, if you will, capital needs list.
Yep.
Which is going to be significantly higher than the one that is in force right now from, I'm saying, 17, 2017. Okay, so now we're on to...
You want me to talk a little bit about subscriptions, Joe?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you to go to subscriptions and before we do the water quality, not the water quality, the water distribution stuff. So yeah, if you could go ahead and speak to that, Jason, that'd be great.
Sure. And then I think that, I mean, this is also something that we need to talk with the city's communications department about. But we've talked internally, I've talked internally with our communications department. And one of the things we'll be undertaking this year is what I'm calling a public notification subscription campaign for 2022. And we're gonna use several different avenues to try to reach the end users and the customers about joining our systems so they can be informed when we have an event that happens. We all know, and as you've discussed and why you put this on here, you know, the tool is as good as the people that sign up to use it. So, you know, we're gonna look at, you know, the press, the radio, website, social media. We're gonna do a mailing. And, but also, at the same time, I want to get with the, our communications department wants to get with the city's communications department to make sure we're doing this, you know, together. But it is something that Suez is committed to doing for this year, throughout the whole year, you know, hoping we can get more people to sign up for our notify system or even the Jersey City's SWIFT 911 system.
And can you say more about what the kind of tiered plan will look like to get to deal with the signups?
The, well, I envision this, this is where I need to sit down with the Jersey City communicator. I have to have the two communication departments, you know, get together. But I mean, it is kind of going out there and, you know, asking people to join. It's putting something in the newspaper, it's getting something out in the press. It is, you know, are you, you know, basically asking customers, are you signed up for, you know, this Suez notify system or the SWIFT 911 system? And if not, here's how to do it, so you can get these notifications when we have things that have to come out to the public. Give them the website, give them the instructions on how to, how to sign up.
A question about that. So this is going to be for large and small-scale emergencies. So for example, the situation on Clamont Avenue that we talked about last week, where, you know, there's an opportunity here for you guys to make this as broad as possible. Because I know that was the big frustration with residents on that block was that a lot of them were home, they had no notification, and just blasting out on social media, like I said before, is not helpful. And that's how everybody thinks, right? Like I know, before everybody was doing notifications on social media, everybody wanted it there. Now people want it back in a different format. That's just the way it's gonna work. But, um, so for example, like we talked about on the call last week, just even a post-it that says, "To sign up for emergency communications or to sign up for any notification, go here." Right? It doesn't have to be complicated. It doesn't need to be a big collaboration with the city. I understand for large-scale events, yes, it does. But I think that if you guys are revamping this, look at it in totality. Because that's, it's going to be a frustration no matter what. So I think that, you know, this will save everyone headache if you guys can work on this now. Because it's, and the opportunity to test it for the smaller scale, I think is also a good opportunity here as well. Because you don't want to put in a bunch of effort and then have another massive incident and have to be working out things like, so here's an opportunity for when there's a localized emergency rupture. You guys can start testing it immediately.
I agree. And when I, when I mentioned this campaign, it wasn't just to be like if there was a citywide event. This was also to handle smaller types of emergencies or events that happen as well.
So, I mean, I think obviously, you know, coordination, collaboration on this is good. I know, I know the director of communication is going to speak a little bit. I know the city's been, you know, advertising its SWIFT 911 on its city channels. But I think, you know, we need to be a little more aggressive here in how we're doing this. I mean, councilman is right. If you sign up for the Suez systems, you know, we should be able to get a more targeted alert for a small water main break in your neighborhood versus some of that's, you know, global and systemic. But, you know, I think one of the key things we identified from the last three incidents was, one, how do we address this to the first bullet point? But how do you address folks who speak different languages and aren't on as much social media and modern communications channels? But then, you know, specifically for the signups here is tenants, right? So residential buildings, how are you alerting tenants? And then commercial tenants, you know, restaurants specifically, with drilling the water, but, you know, all kinds of commercial tenants. And, you know, I think that there are probably, you know, options for us to really push forward to significantly increase the number of, you know, these tenants that are signing up. And to have a robust plan in place. And so it may, it's good that you guys are thinking of a plan for 2022. And to have a robust plan in place. And so it may, it's good that you guys are thinking of a plan for 2022, which I think is is a starting point, but I think we got to really put meat on the bone there in terms of what that actually looks like. And, you know, of course, we have to loop in our communications department to get their input. But at the end of the day, at least for the Suez system, that's, that's your guy's system and something you guys can be able to do without the city. Great if we do a coordinated with the SWIFT 911. But I also think the redundancy helps, right? The more, the more system you have out there, the better ability to get these alerts out, the better. So I, I, I really, I think we, what I am looking for is one more specifics on how we're going to do this.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I'm supposed to speak here, Joe, if you were going to chime in, I mean, I, you know, I talked, like I mentioned, I talked internally with our communications department of, of, you know, what avenues or what can we put together, you know, for this campaign for the start of this year of kind of rolling it out so we can get more people, you know, to subscribe to our systems to get this notification. And then that is, you know, the campaign that we're going to take on, you know, for this year. It can actually, and the more people that sign up, the more people that can be notified for when you have a smaller incident or a larger incident. You know, some of the tools of our system, our notify system is you, you can kind of circle an area in the GIS of notifications for a smaller incident. So those avenues can kind of go out to those customers in an isolated incident. It's just, it's just getting more people to sign up so more people become aware.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. It's, it's it's just getting the folks to sign up and putting a plan in place. So I mean, I, I think at the end of the meeting, we'll kind of talk through next steps, but I really think, you know, let's the public deserve a well thought through, well resourced plan for how to do that. You guys want to move to the next, the next bullet point?
Yeah, this one kind of goes, I skipped down to the wireless emergency alerts.
Same time. Yep.
I just figured it kind of, you know, goes hand in hand with the, with the discussion we just had, but also to the previous conversation we had about different categories of, or, or levels of notification. Obviously boil water advisories would be a, a great one. This is something I believe we kicked around even, I don't know, three, four years ago when Brian Platt was still here. It was more of those automatic, I guess that's what this is, the automatic, very loud beeping emergency alerts you get on your cell phones. I think that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah. So they're, they're, you know, used for amber alerts, used for different types of weather events, things like that, that obviously. And as I understand, the way that they work is they're geographically determined. So it's if your cell phone is in the geographic area, you get the alert.
Yeah, I would have to, so, so I think it's, to me, in my mind, it's as simple as just setting the the threshold of what, what goes on those wire alerts, wireless alerts and what doesn't. Obviously a boil water advisory should probably rise to that level. Obviously a water outage, more importantly, would rise to that, should rise to that level. But again, this is just more agenda items that I need to put together for the communications team, just to make sure we're on the same page. Because to your point, notifying you when you're in the area, that's going to tie into what Councilwoman Prinderry had requested about even just your regular mains in the neighborhood that are out and being able to geographically send messages. Maybe not through that emergency override, but through some other system, through the subscriptions. I'm just wondering if it's more of an IT question of whether we have to populate the GIS for each property with, with cell phone numbers before we circle an area that needs to be notified, for example, just thinking out loud here. But this is just stuff that we need to work through. That's going to be a little bit more time consuming and involved than kind of just giving you an answer here until we actually have an answer. And that's, that's the only reason why I mentioned a separate work group. And yes, you're right, we can't. Maybe subcommittee was the wrong terminology to use, but.
I think, I don't know, specifically on the wireless emergency alerts and how they operate, right? And Director Kirsten, I want to jump in because he and I talked about this in 2020. But as I understood, the city was going through the process of, of kind of registering to be able to do that. My understanding is we are fully registered, but the director can, can kind of confirm or not confirm. And then there's certain protocols that have to be followed to be able to use the system because it's not, you know, it's not just the city controls it. There's, I think, federal rules and all, all those things in place, but it you know, strike me as citywide boil, a large scale water outage, those are the types of things that we would want to use it for. And it would solve this problem of, at least the, the signups for the alert system where, you know, tenants aren't signed up, or if you're in the area, you're in the area. But, you know, part of the purpose of bringing these up over the past couple of months was to start that work process so that we have those protocols within place. But I don't know, Director, if you want to kind of jump in specifically on the wireless alerts and.
Yes. Good afternoon, Councilman and everybody. Yeah, we do participate. We, basically it's the, it's on the FEMA. It's the wireless emergency alert. Some of the types of emergency alerts that you can utilize is obviously coming from the top on a presidential alert. God forbid if we had some type of a national event that was impacting the country, that would take precedent over all, off all cell frequencies. Imminent threat alerts, which is something like human made disasters, extreme weather, active shooters, threatening emergencies that are current or emerging. Public safety alerts, which are a threat that may not be imminent or after an imminent threat has occurred. Obviously amber alerts, we're all familiar with, and the opt-in for texted messaging. You know, one of the, one of the things that's always been an issue with this system, you know, I fund it. However, I do not manage it. And that what this, that is what this system needs. It needs a hands-on manager. Just going over some numbers. I mean, we, we have a population of close to 300,000 people. Yet there's only 57,411 phone numbers in that system for our residents. There are approximately 34 different type of notification lists out there. The health department utilizes this for a lot of their COVID information and things like that. So I think what we have to do, and I, and I think the fact that we could glean some information from Suez's databases also is to have a manager of this entire system. You know, another thing that I, I could never understand is why we never allowed the emergency communication center to be able to send out alerts. I mean, let's face it, if there's something that's occurring within the city, whether it be a large scale incident, fire, shooting or something like that, they're the first ones to know about it. So I think it goes back to what I said before. We need somebody to physically manage the system. I can continue to pay for it. It's covered out of the Homeland Security grants. Occasionally I'll send out a text alert if I'm on scene as a result of a road closure or something like that. But I think in this instance, and there's also obviously some requirements that have to be met on the, especially when it comes to water issues, boil advisories and things like that. I mean, you just can't send that out unless you get the clarity and clearance from the DEP. Am I correct on that, Joe?
Yeah, that's correct, Greg. That's why we're always very careful. As long as they are the first point of communication with the dissemination of information, then we're good. That's why, you know, Suez and MUA are always going to give the nod as to when the additional communication can follow. But yeah, you're right. We're going to have to define with the city Department of Communications and the BA's office, what exactly we would like to disseminate. Sometimes there is too much or anecdotal information that could actually cause us to be fined. So, so.
Right. Right, part of the goal for us to, to, to work that out now. So when it does come, we're not sort of figuring out we should be too much, too little, you know, we, we, if, if we know what the protocols are now, we have a game plan to follow. And, you know, as the director, you know, said, we, we have this tool. Because I have a certain set of rules and guidelines and a procedure to follow, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty powerful communications tool that, you know, we, we need to have a plan in place around.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to go ahead and spearhead pulling in the BA's office and more importantly, the Department of Communications to make sure we have something more robust in place. Again, look, it's, it's Suez, it's OEM and it's JCMUA here, but we're, we're missing some people at the table. It's the easiest way, it's the clearest way I could put it. So I will spearhead that and I will report back if I'm having any trouble with getting that going, but I'll make that a priority. I was hoping to finalize, but the more we started peeling back the onion here, the more it, it, it opened up additional cans, you know, cans of worms. So we got to make sure we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
Okay, great. Do you, do you want to move to the water distribution conversation?
Yeah, absolutely. Another bit of a can of worms, but allow me just to just go ahead and just be very truthful about the way this went down and what I foresee for the future. Yes, we have the list of the sensitive populations. It's actually way more extensive than I ever thought it was. But let's go back to as long as bottled water has been available, right? Plastic throwaways, you know, the easily accessible water. And how often that's actually been used for something like a boil water advisory where water is still available, it just needs to be boiled locally before you put it in your mouth or consume it. I think what you'll find is what I found, that typically the water bottles are not used for the same reasons why we kind of set ourselves up for failure. And, you know, I've been vocal, you've been vocal. We should have never said what we were going to do when we couldn't do it. But I think we're kind of saying now that we shouldn't do it because we won't be able to do it, to be honest. We can't promise that it's going to work out. We can't promise that a billion cases of water are going to be enough. When no matter how many we drop at the curb, they disappear within minutes. So I think what we need to do is take a step back, go back to what works. We know what works. The water buffalos, they tend to work. The tanker truck, which that's another thing, I think we mentioned before, but I'm going to mention it in a little more detail. The DEP regulates how often the tanker truck needs to be sanitized, dumped and sanitized and refilled for distribution. It's a matter of days. We got lucky with Ida and the previous one in 2020. The two CWAs boil water advisories where we didn't go more than three days. In fact, I think we went two days on both. So I think by day three, the end of day three, Suez can correct me if I'm wrong, the tanker needs to leave, be sanitized and refilled. If you bring in a separate tanker, it's a totally separate mobilization fee, which can be astronomical, depending on what time of day or time of week it is. So that being said, the one tanker filling all the water buffalos has seemed to work in the past and only in extreme cases. I'm not sure that boil water advisory rises to that level because the water is still available now. That's not to say that where a neighborhood is going to be for an extended amount of time, to be defined, that is, without water, that they shouldn't be supplemented. That's actually who it's always been meant for. For example, even, even your run of the mill, if you have a 20, I'll use the Merritt Street collapse. Shortly after I started here in March of 2020, we had a 22-inch main at the south end of the city, which is the higher pressure point because a lot of our water for the whole south end of the city goes through that pipe. This pipe blew, right adjacent to that, you have, you have Currys Woods and various other senior towers in Greenville that were completely out of water. That is an absolute event where we would definitely bring in supplementation as we did. We saw the importance of it. Everyone found whatever containers they could in their homes to come and get water and bring it back. We would be supplementing obviously with those bags that I introduced to you at the last meeting. We're buying 10,000 right now. We're going to buy another 20,000 to have in stock. Those are the polyethylene, they're easy to store, easy to carry, one gallon bags, if you will, with a handle and a spout. But again, I do think that that's extremely important in neighborhoods, localized or not, where water is completely cut out. Because we need to get water to these people one way or another. Boil water advisories, I think we should really think twice about the level of supplementation. Again, Suez has promised, don't quote me on this, but I believe it was publicly promised by Nadine, two water buffalos per ward. I don't remember the size of them. I don't think she got into that detail, but keeping those stocked at all times with the tanker again, just to repeat myself, which I tend to do a lot, is a lot easier. One source of supply to track, easy to meet demand and promise. The water bottles are definitely a slippery slope. I'm recommending that we don't implement them at all, period.
Yeah, so I, I think we're, I think we, we are all in agreement that we're not looking for some sort of proposal that, that kind of says that every household in the city is going to get, you know, a case of water every, every day during a boil water advisory. I, I think what I'm looking for is, you know, the sort of a written, again, set of procedures and plans that are going to be followed that outline what we're doing in a different set of scenarios. Whether it's a citywide boil water advisory, or it's a water main break and things are out. And I, I know you have versions of those. And, and then that's something that we can then provide feedback on and send back to. You did send a list of sensitive populations, so we will distribute that to the full council so we can get the an updated list together on that front. But, you know, I think, again, what I, what I'm looking for is, again, is the, the, the plan. And, and part of the reason I harp on that is I think if, if putting it on paper, it forces you to think through the trade-offs. So, okay, are we, are we actually committing to the, the tank? Are we committing to the water buffalos? What, what is the commitment and, and when are we committing to it? And then if, you know, this does happen, then, then for us in the future, there's a clear metric to say here's what was followed and here's what wasn't.
That's very fair. I, I must admit, I got, I got kind of caught up in the whole really just trying to meet, meet the, the want. I know there is a want for, for the water bottle supplementation, but every, everywhere I ran in conversation with Suez and in my own mind, none of it really tallied what, what, what would, what would make sense logically. If I know, if I know the factors that could possibly go wrong, which are many. So, so I'm glad you clarified that for me, Councilman. I now have, I, I will definitely have a full protocol for you at the next meeting on what we should be in writing. And you're right, as long as you have that in writing, it can't be questioned. So, you know, we could always talk about, you know, making some modifications on the fly, but we need the basis. You're right, the basis in writing. And yes, you actually relieved me of a lot of stress on that one because I just couldn't make it work. Also numbers wise, I didn't even report the numbers, but it's astronomically expensive resources and distribution wise. And even the water itself becomes expensive unless we, you know, have contracts in place and then, you know, there's really no, there's really no hammer to force them to have that water in place. If they fail, they fail. They don't get paid. What are we going to do? Charge them a penalty? We can't, right? So these are some of the things that, that were spinning around in my head. So yes, you will definitely have a protocol that we recommend for water supplementation in the future. And we'll break it out separately by what triggers a local shut off of water, what, what period of time of water so that we can discuss and negotiate and finalize as a, as a group. You know, a 12-hour shutdown in a neighborhood, meeting, you know, 100 people, that happens almost every night. That wouldn't rise to that level. But, you know, 24, 36 hours, obviously that's, that's, that's a serious concern. Even for five, 10 people, right? So. I will have that for.
And, and I think, I think to that point, just to reiterate what the Councilman said, it, you know, it, it gives as a place to start, but also a place to go on in the future. And once you have that baseline and you know you can adjust accordingly, because also as parts of the city grow, the needs are going to change as well, right? So, you know, right, right now downtown is seeing a lot of development that's going to be slowing. You're going to be seeing a lot more shifting onto the west side and the south side of the city moving forward. So, so this, you know, gives you, if you don't, what do they say, failing to plan is planning to fail. And so I think that having a, a set of protocols and procedures will also help. And so I think that having a a set of protocols and procedures will also help everyone communicate out and help manage expectations. Of what can and can't be done, but also if we are able to communicate that out and people know that this is the working plan for events. It helps our residents plan ahead as well, right? So maybe they will be, you know, have the ability to go and and pick up their own water and then knowing that this is going to be supplemented and this is why it's being supplemented. Most people are reasonable when they know why. It's when they don't know why that all hell breaks loose. I mean, we see that with every single event. So I think that just, you know, having this this plan in place. It gives you a lot more flexibility way down the road that that will be helpful for everyone.
Note, well taken. Notes, well taken. That's, that makes a lot of sense, Councilman.
So would I like to, I just want to ask you, when there's something to point, then before I get to what I think is closing. One is it just is to understand what what the communication, but what the city council is, it's something that all of us have brought up, uh, Council President and Councilman Prin Zary. Um, and again, on a big event versus a small event. Um, you know, we've, we've mentioned other, other, you know, outside utilities and government agencies that that have a plan in place. And again, it's not different, that's not all that different than, um, what the council, we just talked about with people just knowing. If the council knows what the lines of communication are supposed to be, you know. We're all going to be pretty reasonable, um, and understanding what they are. Actually, when we don't know, that's when we all sort of start to say, understand like, you know. We're blowing people up and you're and you're, and it it. It actually makes the process worse because we're spending, you know, people are spending hours fielding calls from nine of us, um, delivering the same information nine separate times. So I I just think that they're kind of honing in on what that is in these different events. So again, we know what it is, um, is really important.
So so really, just very quickly to that point, on the day to day, when we have mains and whatnot. I imagine every council person, um, if not also the at large, but every council person, uh, assigned to each ward. Will want to know about every single one of those. Is that correct? Have you been getting those notices? Because I know we discussed specifically, uh, Councilman Solomon. Uh, that last year with that, I think it started with that break that was flooding the tunnel that ended up being their line, but. Um, we think we added you and I thought we added all of the council in on every break.
So I I don't know. I can't speak for the rest of the council. I am on the Suez notification system, so I do get those emails when there's a break and. Uh, so if I can follow along on the response, um, okay. Again, I can't speak without.
I also am on the list from when we had some issues previously in the board, but the challenge that I've been having, and this is something I've been working with our IT department on. Is that a number of notifications, at one point, almost 80 to 90% of them were going into a quarantine folder. So I was getting them as the situation was unfolding, but they weren't popping up in my notification because it would just. Suddenly I'd just get a quarantine notice and there would be like five of them in there. So it seems to be getting better, um, but that that's just been a challenge that I've had on my end. I don't know, Councilman, if you've had the same issue.
I I have.
Couple of different ways to to move them out and it hasn't been working, so.
I I I have as well and I sent them to IT to. Try to address and they're in the process of trying to address them, but but that's a, that's an internal issue. I think we can hopefully resolve with IT.
And so that's ours, you're not necessarily yours.
But yeah, but but I I just know that the Councilman and I both specifically requested to be on those lists and I'm not sure any of the other council people have, and I'm not sure if they're included or not.
We will, uh, we'll verify that as part of the SOP. I just wanted to make sure that at least that was clear. Because that's something like literally, especially this time of year, like every night, sometimes we have three and four in the night. Um, at any one time, we might have 30 plus, uh, active leaks that. You know, they go until they go because we can't get to them. But if they don't, if we shut them down, that's a whole other host of problems, as you would imagine. So it's not uncommon to have leaks continue to leak as long as they don't undermine any other utilities or the roadway. And they're not in danger of fully blowing up, so. Yeah, no, I'll make sure that that's clear as well. Jason, I I believe you you changed the protocol at that time about a year and a half ago. But I'd just like you to just verify that if you could, make sure all the council people, we have some new ones as well, uh, are on the, uh, notification list.
Yeah, I'll check and get that confirmed, Joe.
Also, if you have it broken down by ward, our wards changed a bit, quite a bit. So, uh, we're going to have to discuss that a little bit further.
Yeah, I I would recommend if you guys do break it down, you might want to break it down by district. The way that we have fire and police, because there are some things that, you know, Marion is no longer in Ward B, but that still absolutely affects the west side of the city. So I would maybe, you guys might even want to rethink not doing wards, but districts.
It might, in that case, it might be easier to just notify the entire council on every one. I mean, it might be a little bit of a bombard on your email, but. Two extra emails a night, you're probably getting. You know.
It's no different to Action Network emails that we get all the time. If you see something pop up, you do a quick cursory reading, you move it into a folder. I'd rather know than not know.
Right, okay.
Joe, I don't think we break it down by ward or district now. I think it's. Well, I'll verify.
Okay, that that's probably best for everyone to just get it. No matter where it is. All right, I think that I I have my, uh, marching orders. I know that. So, um, and I have some clarity, more importantly, so.
Council, anything you want to touch base on?
No, I think that just covers it. I mean, I think as as we're working towards the notification plan, like I said before, just just having something that's a little bit broader. And not necessarily singularly focused on major events. So with with some of these other. Other plans, though, I understand these things are going to take time, but but there should be some urgency for sure.
My my sort of big picture through the council, what you said is. There's a, is, you know, I I, an endless committee is not something that's doable or foreseeable and, you know. Part of my expectation has been we're we're bringing these issues up to work through that. Um, and we talked in December about, hey, we we finished their four meetings. You know, here's some of the outlines, you know, take a month to work through them and and we're now, you know. Month and a half past that point, nearly nearly two months and and we're having made a ton of progress. Couple, couple of things to move forward, like the water quality monitoring idea, but but most of them haven't. So, I mean, basically, what what where I'm at is, you know, I I will work with the committee and and everybody, maybe try to schedule a hearing in about a month, so early, early March. Um, but I'm not interested in doing much more than that. And, um, yeah, the expectation would be that, that, you know, we have pretty detailed, thought through plans and all these issues for that hearing. And, you know, if it involves working with the comms department for the next month to get that done, great. And if they're not responsive, you got to let us know, uh, and we can, we can ask them. Um, you know, I know when with the committee was started, we talked with the mayor, he said he was on board with this. So, um, you know, we can, we can talk whoever we need to talk to to get work done, but. Um, and basically, you know, at at that March meeting, I think. As as a, the council members on this committee, the council president, councilwoman Prin Zary, Councilman Bojiano and myself, like, I mean. We just have to sort of sit down and and kind of come to the determination, you know, did did the problems get solved and then talk to the public about. That the answer to that question. You know, council's job is oversight. It's not, we're not, we're not the ones offering the 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 plans here, so. You know, that's that's sort of where I'm at with with where we're at and and. My hope will be able to deliver a favorable message at that point. And certainly knowing, you know, from my perspective, it's going to impact the way I look at all the. MUA and Suez related stuff that comes before the council, you know, are we able to to. Identify clear mistakes and come up with solutions or or do we, you know, spend six months talking about things with with no concrete change? And so I think we got a month to figure that out.
Understood.
Great, that's it for me. So I think I can make a motion to close.
Okay, I'm seconding.
A motion to adjourn at 2:09.
I know.
PM by Councilperson Solomon and a second by Councilperson Prin Zary. All in favor of the motion to adjourn at 2:09 PM, all council members present by acclamation, please say aye. We are out of here at 2:09 PM. Thank you so much, council members. Um, directors and, uh, members of Suez and, uh, anybody else involved, appreciate all of your hard work. Uh, as always, teamwork makes the dream work. Um, please stay safe. Have a great rest of the day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Take care. Thank you so much.